Meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for May 16th, 2023. Madison, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so item four is a correction and/or acceptance of the City Council meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2023. Are there any comments or corrections? Okay, hearing none. We'll accept those into the record then. Item number five on our agenda tonight is correspondence. Mr. Fields, start with you.
It was a quiet couple of weeks. I didn't have any correspondence.
Okay. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had one from the president of the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park Association inviting me to their annual membership meeting.
Ms. Quinnow?
I had an email correspondence from a constituent regarding the construction placement, the vehicle, or the office that they have it placed in a weird way. Other than that, not much more.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
I had a couple of correspondences regarding the College Street project.
Okay, thank you. I also received the invitation, I think we all did, from the Sandy Beach Mobile Home Association and invitation for some, a meeting with WPPI. I spoke to the applicants for the Zoning Board of Appeals who are on tonight's agenda. Drake and I received a contact regarding the Midwest EMS Memorial Bike Ride, which is planned to ride through Lake Mills on the afternoon of June 15th. I think they're looking to maybe do a stop at our fire department and recognize Chief Yandre. And then I got a question regarding Rock Lake water levels. And just as FYI, we do have some information on the city's webpage. I followed up with Mr. Schreiner and his department manages the water levels. And it's typical at this time of year that the boards are put in on May 2nd to start to raise the water. And depending on the precipitation, the lake may not come up as quickly as people might hope. But there's lots of information that people can find on the city's webpage about the water levels. Okay. Let's move on then. We can open the floor for questions and public comments. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So do we have anyone here tonight who would like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone looking online. It looks like we have city staff and Mr. Waters online. I don't see any other citizens. So if there's no public comment, we will close the public comment period and move to the next item. So item seven is our city manager's report. And Mr. Daly, I noticed that you've attached a number of documents for us.
Yep. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or Sam can assist in answering them as well.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Daly? Okay. Thank you very much. Item eight is the council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Public Works Board of April 11th, 2023. So those minutes are attached. I was serving on that board for that meeting, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if people have any.
Ms. Kurler, maybe we could get to this for the tap grant. I was trying to see if you discussed that tap grant in the last meeting, or it didn't look like you did, so I would just have...
I believe that was discussed last week, so Mr. Waters can probably...
Yes, that was discussed at our last meeting, which was last, last week, yes.
Okay, then I'll hold my questions. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the Public Works Board minutes? Okay, we'll accept those into the record then. And we'll move on to item nine, council business. The first item, letter A, is a discussion decision on confirmation of the City Council President's appointments of Tira Goodrich to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to end 2024, Michael Witt to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to end 2026, and appointing Michael Witt as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we have two vacancies on the Zoning Board of Appeals, one due to someone whose term was ending and decided not to renew, and the other due to an individual stepping down. So I'd like to thank Todd Temperley and Thomas Whiting for their service to the board, and these are my two new appointments to fill those vacancies. Any questions? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the City Council President's appointments of Tira Goodrich, Michael Witt, and, oh, he's the Chair also. So I move to approve her appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quinnow. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Madison, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, letter B is the Resolution 23-30, acceptance of the comprehensive annual financial report. Madison, can you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-30, resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, accepting the 2022 audited financial statement as presented by the external audit firm.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 23-30, accepting the comprehensive annual financial report from Hawkins Ash.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. And I see we have, Mr. Krieger is already here at the podium, so would you like to turn it over to him? Okay, thank you for being here. I might remember your name right, Chuck Krieger.
So, thank you for having me here tonight. I am going to go over the summary, summary financial report. So it's only about eight pages long. So if you've got any of the larger ones you're looking at, you can save those for later. So let's go to, I know it's not going to be up on the screen, but let's go to page two, which is the independent auditor's report. Couple of things I always like to point out about this is it is independent, so they're not paying our fee. We are independent with regards to the, to the city. You know, we, we don't pay taxes in the city. We don't have some sort of connection to the City Council or anything like that. So it is independent. And the report has changed a little bit in the last couple of years. This format has been around now for, I think, three years, but it starts out with the opinion. It used to be it gave you some background information, then you kind of flipped the page, and the money paragraph was on the next page, and it was the opinion that everything looks good and materially correct in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Okay? Some years back, they decided, well, we really should tell them right up front that everything is good. So yes, you have a clean opinion. It is the best opinion you can get, and spend the same opinion since I've been on this job. Now, this independent auditor's report, since it's related to the summary information that follows it, it's a little different than what you would see in your full, full audit report. It talks about the summary financial information that has been extracted from that report. Okay? And refers to both years that we have presented in this, in this summary report. It does talk about management's responsibility. That would be you. You do have responsibility to give us information, provide us with, with the information we've asked for, and do your best to make sure it's correct. Our responsibility is to take that information, give you an opinion on it. So we've all fulfilled our responsibilities in this case, and the result was, as I said, a clean opinion. So if we're going to go to page four, this is the combined balance sheets. It's, you know, assets on the top, the liabilities, the next third or so, and then at the bottom is the, is the equity. I always like to say it's assets what you own, liability is what you owe, and the equity is what you have left. Okay? Just a couple of big picture items. You know, look at cash investments. It went up somewhat, but that kind of varies with the tax roll and, and the receipts that you might have in December from a, from a tax roll perspective. Might be in unspent bond proceeds from the year, that type of thing. So that, you know, the variance, you look and say, well, it's $700,000. That's not, that's pretty typical, I think, with the ebbs and flows of what you have. Taxes receivable, fairly consistent with prior year, as are the accounts payable. Special assessments. You had a big project special assessed in 2022. I think those bills probably went out late in '22. So you'll be getting collections on those in the next few years. That's why the receivable is up. Cash from those will be coming in the next, I'd say, two to seven years, something like that. I forget what, what the timeframe is for, for repurchase. Now, the one thing I'm going to spend a minute or two on is the leases. There's a number there of 1.5, almost 1.6 million, and you go, holy cow, what's that? Okay? If you look down at the liability side, and I don't know if it's separately stated, but there, in the liabilities, deferred inflows of resources, like the bottom third of the page, there's a lease number that's 1.6 million also. A new standard that was required this year is we had to look at lease activity, and if you had any material leases. Now, a lot of times you might have one that maybe goes for a month-to-month, you know, you, you, the, what, Mobile Home Park, San Bay, one of, some of those things, they, they get renewed every year. So short-term leases are not includeable in this. But this one results from one agreement that you have, and it's with Verizon for the tower that they put up behind the, behind the building here. Okay? The agreement states once the tower's up, they have a five-year commitment, basically, rolling five years, and then they have the option to renew that for up to, I think the total was like 10 more five-year periods. So you've got 55 years potentially that they're going to be there. So when we looked at that, we asked the question, what's the probability that they're going to renew that lease down the road after the first five years is up? And we consulted with the attorney and with, with Sam, and they all agreed it's pretty certain that they are going to keep that up because they invested the money to put it up there. Okay? So they don't see that happening, that they're going to pull, plug on that anytime soon. So this 1.6 million basically represents future payments that you are going to get over the next 55 years, discounted back to the value that it is today. Okay? It, it only affects your balance sheet here. You see the number matches on top and the bottom, but you will get that lease revenue in your, will be reflected every year in your financial statements. Kind of a crazy, in my opinion. I don't know why they came up with this, because it's kind of crazy to inflate the balance sheet, you know, both sides of it, for really nothing changing on the revenue and expense, expense side. But that's the, what, what we have to live with. So that's, that's why that is a big jump from last year. We, you know, adopted a new principle. Moving down, prepaid expenses went down by 600,000. Last year, you had paid early on the ambulance, I think, the, the fire truck, sorry. So you had a, made that payment in December of '21, but you hadn't taken possession of it yet. So that's why the big decrease in that for this year. The 90,000 is typical of what you've had in the past. Other items there, the advances to other funds, that's your TIF districts. A lot of times they spend money before they get bond proceeds, you know, when they're just starting out. So the city has advanced those monies, and they will be paid back through the tax increment. And then fixed assets, the Wisconsin Retirement System. Again, nothing too crazy there. The deferred outflows, similar from year to year, the Wisconsin Retirement System varies with the actuarial study that the state does. Okay, that's, some of these items you have no control over. You know, you look at it and you say, well, what's that? That's your portion of the Wisconsin Retirement System activity, and really, the fluctuations are based entirely out of your hands. It's just... Second half, the liability section, nothing really jumps out there. The accounts payable kind of ebbs and flows with when you do a check run and when you get the bills in. You know, and, and part of that could be, okay, the increase in cash. Okay, last year, maybe ran, ran, had to run the checks in December. This year, some of them came in January. So the payables would be up and the, and the cash, payables would be down, cash would be up. accrued liabilities, a lot of this stuff is comparable from year to year. And it's good to see the advances match on the liability side and on the, on the asset side. That's always a good thing. Then the long-term obligations, that's principally your long-term debt for both the city and utilities. Deferred inflows of resources, taxes that you leveraged for, and this, this is not the amount that the city leveraged by itself. This includes everything that went out on the tax bills. Special assessments, we talked about that. You'll be getting some of that in in future years. And Wisconsin Retirement System again. And then the equity at the end, the general fund went down a little bit. The net position is really your utilities. That went up a little bit, about $2 million, mostly due to fixed assets that were added. Okay, let's just jump to the next page. This is revenues. And in general, the numbers are comparable from year to year. A couple of items to note, about, I don't know, about a third of the way down the page, the other grants line. You've got 1.1 million last year. This year, it was 600,000. Biggest change there was last year, you got like 700,000 in grants for your boat launch, state grants through the DNR. It might have been some federal money in there, too. So obviously, you didn't get, you don't get that every year, which is the, the reason for the, for the reduction. Electric utility. You can see it went up about $750,000 in revenue. A big chunk of that, I think probably most of that, the, the actual consumption only went up about 1%. Okay? But this obviously is more than 1% increase in, and there's something called the PCAC. That's the adjustment that's made to utility bills for the cost of what you have to pay to buy the energy. Okay? And obviously, cost of energy was going up in 2022. So when you compare the PCAC, it was a positive adjustment to everybody's bill in 2022. Last year and '21, the costs were actually decreasing. So the difference between last year's reduction in revenue and this year's increase was about $900,000. So like I said, the, the actual consumption didn't change much. It's strictly in that PCAC adjustment for the most part. Again, the rest of the items are fairly comparable. You know, interest was up a little bit. Well, rates are up. Money invested would, would get you more return on investment. You had no property sale this year. And then the proceeds from long-term debt, that varies with whatever projects you have going on for each year. Now, you got a nice pie chart there that kind of summarizes it. And obviously, the public charges for services is 50%. That's really, most of that is your utilities. Okay? It's a little misleading because utilities is lumped in with the, with the city operations. So if we go to page six, this is the expense side of it. And again, things are very comparable for the most part. Obviously, if you look at the electric utility, the cost, 8 million compared to about 7.3, 7.4 last year. Again, that goes into what they had to pay for the, for the power. Community and economic development went down about 500,000. Wasn't sure on this one. I, Sam, maybe you can, I think this was developer agreements, maybe, or something to that effect? I'm not positive on what that one... It went from 500,000 to 29,000. So I don't have an answer on that one. I didn't look at that when I was getting ready for this, but we can get you an answer on that, either Sam will, or I can send you something. Culture, recreation, education. This is where the boat launch comes in from last year to this year. So it went from a million down to 115,000, and that's where the, the, the cost of the boat launch went in. It was a, under the capital outlay, so obviously, it's a long, a long-term asset. You had the funding, a lot of it from that, from that grant, and other was, other amounts were from either long-term debt or the operational stuff. Again, debt service principal and interest comparable, and the transfers out, that, the transfers are what the utilities pay the city instead of you assessing property taxes against them. Okay? And it's based on assessment ratio and fixed assets that they have invested in. Now, you'd say, well, shouldn't it be going up every year? Well, the assessment ratio changed, which, which is why it took a decrease, even though the total fixed assets went up. Yes?
Mr. Krieger, under capital outlay on this page, the public safety, that went up about tenfold. Was that also a?
The, the public safety?
Fire truck, or, seems like there was a big vehicle expenditure, but I don't recall.
So the public safety went up. That was the fire truck actually hitting the books this year.
Okay.
Okay. Prepaid expenses went from prepaid to actually the, the physical outlay amount.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it was just timing that the, the payment crossed the end of 2021 to 2022. And after that, page seven just kind of shows the fund balance activity, beginning in January 1 of '22, revenues and expenditures, and the, and the balance at the end of the year. Again, you can see the, we talked about advances. The TIF districts mostly have negative fund balances, and that's funded by the, by the city until they come up with a positive increment that exceeds the invested expenses. I know that was pretty quick. I'm not going to say one call, all call for, for questions. Obviously, if you have some later on, get them to Sam. She'll send them to me, and we can get you an answer on stuff. But I have to thank the staff, you know, transition in all kinds of areas this last year, from, you know, Betsy being here quite a few years, Steve Wilkie being here a, a good long time, and transition, from our perspective, relatively seamless. I think it, it helped that Sam came in and there was an overlap between her and Betsy. And so she, she got to kind of learn the ropes, and not everything is exactly the same the way Sam and Betsy ran it, but I wouldn't expect it to be. So you're in good hands right now. Not that you weren't before, but it was, like I said, a relatively seamless handoff.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. That's good to hear. And I noticed somewhere in the many pages that we read, there was a, a specific call out to Sam Ball and her assistants. So thank you, Sam, for that. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Krieger or staff?
The, the question that Chuck did pull out on the community and economic development, that was a big question mark that I had when I reviewed it. So I appreciate that he called that out, and I do look forward to getting more information on that.
Will do.
Thank you.
And I, I think this method of presenting the information is very helpful to me. I know I corresponded with Sam earlier by email, and that was kind of one of my main questions is can you highlight, you know, some of the things that are different from year to year and why those might be. Certainly, there's things naturally that are going to fluctuate a little bit, but when they're big numbers, it's kind of nice to be, have our memories refreshed on why they might be different. Yeah. Because it was both of them. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bishop?
I had comments, and it's really a discussion for us and staff, and it's the finding that the city doesn't have a debt service fund. And this is the second year in a row we've had that finding. I didn't go back other years. Last year, the city's response that was incorporated in Hawkins Ash report was it's not practical for the city to have one. But it is required statutorily. So at this point, I'm wondering, what do we do moving forward? If there's a finding that it's not practical, do we need to memorialize that? I might want a legal opinion on that matter. And so I want to bring that about for discussion and maybe resolution tonight as to how we move forward. Do we create one, or do we get a legal opinion saying that it's okay to not have one and why?
Chuck and I have discussed, sorry, Michelle. No, I was just going to ask her, what was the one thing, I, I guess you, you were really fast. Can you repeat the first part of what we're looking for?
So the first part of what I said was that the report notes that we, the city does not have a debt service fund.
Oh, a debt service fund, okay.
Right. And this is not the first year we've had that finding, and that the previous year, the city's response was it's not practical. But it is required under state statute to have one.
Sorry, Sam. Go ahead.
I was just going to say Chuck and I did correspond a little bit in regards to that. But Drake and I have had, not had time to talk about it yet.
So is that something you can follow up with us on then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
The other question, and we'll confirm this, but the Economic Development and Community Fund that decreased from 534 to 29. In 2021, I believe we would have received, it would have been a pass-through from us to the end user, but both TOPLES and Tyranina would have received a $250,000 grant from WEDC for their projects. It seems to line up well with those numbers, but that is my, that's what my gut feeling is, is what those numbers are, but we'll confirm those for you.
Yeah, and that, that's what my, off the top of my head was, it was going to be those, those developer payments. But again, I, I didn't have anything else in front of me to confirm that.
So I had another question or, or comment on the, one of the documents. I think it's the, let's see, I corresponded with you about this today, Sam. One of the documents talks about the status of our unreserved fund balance. And I just was wondering if you could just talk us through what's the process for looking at what that balance is and whether it's within our financial policy and then what to do with it? Or Drake, either one can...
I'll, I'll start, and then Sam can fill in the gaps. But the, the policy is 15% to 25% of revenues. We are well in excess of that. Sam, what's our percentage right now?
Three.
Thirty-three?
Forty-three.
Forty-three percent.
I think the report's at 43.
As far as a process is to, you know, remaining more within the 15, 15 to 25 and not exceeding the 25, the, the main review comes during the budget review process to determine if we want to use those for one-time expenditures, whether we need to use it to assist in operations somewhere. For example, like when we have the increase in our EMS costs, whether we tap into that to bridge the gap for a few years as we, as we build up that expenditure. So it's really during the budget process that we evaluate where that, what we have in the fund balance and what opportunities there are to utilize that within the budget. I know in the past, it's been used to purchase capital items with cash rather than with borrowings. So it's at those kind of decision points is when, in the past, the city has kind of determined how to use that fund balance. But we don't have a, a set policy. I guess you'd say that we always spend it down to always be at that 25%, but we evaluate what our needs are at the budget time and then use it strategically to meet those needs.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. And so then we'll be, we'll look at that when we get into budget season in September and see what our needs are, as you said, and, and whether, and what the status of that balance is at that time. the status of that balance is at that time. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll get some follow-up to confirm that difference in the economic development revenue, and then Mrs. Bishop's question about the debt service fund. Thank you, Mr. Krieger, for being here. We really appreciate it.
Good.
Okay. So if there are no other questions, then I guess we need a roll call vote on Resolution 2330, which is the acceptance of the comprehensive audit annual financial report from Hawkins Ash CPAs.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, next item is Resolution 23-31 regarding the TAP Grant Pedestrian Connectivity Project. Madison, can you read that title, please?
Resolution 23-31 authorizing the city manager to bid the TAP Grant Pedestrian Connectivity Project.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Oh. That's the downside to virtual. I move to approve Resolution 23-31 authorizing the city manager to bid the TAP Grant Pedestrian Connectivity Project.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Quednow, second by Mr. Waters. Staff discussion on this one?
Consulting engineer, Brandon with Strand Engineering is online, available to answer questions. This item did go before the Public Works Board, and they recommended, they recommended adoption of the ordinance. But with your permission, I'll ask Brandon to kind of run through some of the locations of where it's going to be, and we'll, and then we can go from there.
That'd be great. Welcome, Brandon.
Thank you. So, TAP Grant has been in process for a few years. This council approved to apply for the grant back in April of 2020. We received the grant, and then the council approved the state municipal agreement to accept the funds in January of 2021. We've been working on the design and some of the other kind of DOT-related processes ever since. This is a DOT local program project. TAP stands for Transportation Alternatives Program. So this project is essentially seven segments of sidewalk spread out throughout the city. Initially, when we applied for the grant, the 2005 officially adopted sidewalk plan was consulted pretty heavily to kind of determine which gaps in the sidewalk we should apply for. The seven segments are, there's a small segment up by Lake Mills Market that will finalize a pedestrian, off-street pedestrian connection to Lake Mills Market along County Highway V. There's two other segments along County Highway V, east of Main Street. One is on the north side of the road, kind of goes past the Badger Chevy dealership, and will connect to the Future Holiday and Express there. So that will complete a connection to that future hotel, which should be a pretty big driver of pedestrian traffic, probably people walking to shops and restaurants on Main Street and kind of up by the 89 and V intersection. There will be one small piece of that that is missing due to a kind of unusual town-island parcel there that kind of limited our ability to put the sidewalk across entirely. But city staff have been talking about ways that we might be able to facilitate closing that gap in the near future here. The other segments are, there's a section on Reed Street that creates a kind of an east-west connection that's missing through that residential neighborhood. Similarly, on Marguerite Street, another east-west connection that kind of saves pedestrians quite a bit of time and distance that you're trying to traverse east to west across the city. And then there's another on Prairie and Pope Street that does the same thing. It's an existing residential neighborhood that lacks some connectivity on the sidewalk network. I guess that's some details. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail that you'd like to know about.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions or comments?
I would only add that it's 80%, 20%, federally funded by 80%, 20% cost share for the city. And then, Brandon, there is, one of the segments does create a connection to one of our parks, correct?
Correct. Yep. One of the sections on County Highway V goes along Fayetteville Park there. So that'll be a nice connection to, that park currently doesn't really have any formal pedestrian access even along it. So that'll be a nice connection there. And I will also add to Drake's comments that the total grand value or free money that the city's getting is about $432,000. And also, this total length of sidewalk, I think, is noteworthy as well. It's about 6,000 feet of sidewalk. And I actually missed one. One is State Highway 89 to the south, or making a connection to the St. Paul's Church and School facility down there. So that sidewalk will actually connect, you know, the entirety of the Main Street, north-south sidewalk, all the way down to the front entrance of St. Paul's.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mrs. Bishop?
Brandon, this is Catherine Bishop. I have a question more about the connection where you said there's an island that's town property that we may be skipping some sidewalk there. How much town property is that? Do you know footage-wise? Is it just one parcel? It just seems a little ridiculous to me to put in all the sidewalk, have all the equipment and stuff out there, and then not bridge that one gap where we may even be annexing that parcel in the near future, depending on where it's located. I'm not familiar with the site specifically, but I'd really like to be able to work that out. Can you tell me some more about how much footage that is?
Sure. I completely agree with your comments. I really wish we would have been able to do that all in one project. It's about 200 feet, if I remember right. It is just one parcel. It's a storage unit facility on the north side of County V that's kind of in between, it's to the west of the dentist clinic that's there, if that, you know, brings any belt and swap specifics. Part of the issue there is that.
It's actually, I'm sorry, Brandon. It's actually, it's Cunis RV.
Oh, okay.
At the storage facility. It's a.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Drake. Yep. We are.
Mr. Daley, is that the?
Sidewalk across the storage unit.
Is that the RV location adjacent to Badger Chevrolet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you, Drake. The issue is that the town-island parcel actually kind of owns out to the center line of the road. So there's truly not even like a county highway right-of-way necessarily there for. So the city didn't really have any power to convey the sidewalk across there. It's not in the city. There's not really even existing right-of-way necessarily. There is a county roadway there, but the city has to kind of work with that property owner to get the sidewalk across. Drake or Dan, if you had anything to add to that that I may have missed, it'd be appreciated.
I think it's certainly one we've identified as a gap we would like to fill sooner than later. It's just, as he mentioned, it's a town property along a county road. And so in this process, it was just, it just wasn't feasible to include it here. But we would like to certainly have conversations with the property owner and see if we can come to an agreement on filling that gap in the near future, because it is kind of the last, it's going to be the last spot there, especially with the hotel coming in.
Yeah, exactly. That's going to be, you're walking from McDonald's back to the hotel, and you have one gap in sidewalk. That's a little silly. I would really like us to be able to work with that property owner if we can, especially since they're adjacent to two other city properties there. Thank you, Brandon, for the update.
Welcome. Thank you.
I think this, oh, go ahead.
No, you go.
Ms. Quednow. I was just going to, I guess, question or comment. I think it's in our material somewhere, but due to the nature of the TAP grant, we don't put any special assessments on the properties adjacent to these sidewalks. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a term of receiving that grant money. We don't special assess for the city portion, the city share.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Quednow?
I just want to comment that I know a lot of people are going to be very happy about the sidewalk going to Fayetteville Park, because it's been something that I've been hearing about quite a bit here and there, but it will be well-received. So, thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Bishop?
Just my other question that I said I was going to hold off on. Mr. Waters, was there anything from the Public Works Board meeting that we should know about or that you'd like to add in regard to this conversation?
At Public Works, it was very well-received. I think I only commented on one property, on Reed Street, where the profile of the sidewalk was kind of up and down, and I asked if that could be smoothed out a little bit, and got some feedback that that was a hard task from the planners. But it was unanimous at Public Works.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Madison, can we, let's see, so this is Resolution 2331 authorizing the city manager to bid the TAP Grant Pedestrian Connectivity Project. Madison, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item is Letter D, Resolution 23-32 regarding Doyle's Dogs' food cart contract at Sandy Beach Park. Madison, would you please read that title?
Resolution 23-32 authorizing the city manager to amend the seasonal use agreement with Doyle's Dogs to allow operation of a concession stand out of the former Sandy Beach concession stand and bait shop building.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2332 authorizing the city manager to amend the seasonal use agreement with Doyle's Dogs to allow operation of a concession stand out of the former Sandy Beach concession stand and bait shop building.
Second. Do you have a motion for Mr. Field, second from Mrs. Bishop? I'm going to ask that we have Mr. Doyle come up and explain his project first, since he's making this proposal. Can we get a motion to suspend the rules, please?
So moved.
Do a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Field to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Doyle to speak with the council. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Mr. Waters is, so that's a five zero. Okay, welcome, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Tell us a little bit about your project and what you're asking.
Well, we're trying to enhance Sandy Beach and bring more down there for families. The state changed some of the rules as far as vending a cart down there, in that they made a change where all refrigeration needs to be permanently mounted on the cart. And if you have seen our cart, there is not a whole lot of space there to do that. I think they're pretty much going after food trucks, and we're getting pulled into it. But, so we are looking for a possibility to still have a presence there and bring as much to the community as we can. We would not be able to prepare food in any way. Everything would be prepackaged. But that means candies are there, ice cream is there, drinks are there. And it's just providing as much as we can to the community. Plus, being in a building, you are in a better position to be there more because of the weather conditions that can come off the lake, and/or just wind itself coming off the lake. And we definitely would make it look better than it currently does. So that's our intent, to give something, to give something positive to the community and provide more hours for some of the students working there.
Thank you. So I think in the memo that we have from the city staff, it indicates that you're planning to sell, you said prepackaged food, and then also some other beach.
Yep.
Kind of paraphernalia. Do you have some thoughts on your hours that you'd be staffing at, or?
Well, there are several, several students waiting to hear whether we're going to be hiring more people. I'm looking at either a Wednesday through Sunday or a Thursday through Sunday, more of a midday to 5:00 PM type of thing.
And I don't mean to hold you to it, but just wanted to kind of get a sense of your plans.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And part of that then is having the staff to do that. And we do have some people currently waiting to see whether we're going to bring a few more people onboard to fill those hours. The thing that's listed in there of having the vending soda machine there would provide beverages to the beach 24/7, which used, from what I understand, used to be there. And now with just the vending that has happened the past number of years, if nobody's there, there's nothing there.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Doyle at this time? Maybe you can stick around, because we'll.
Sure.
We'll talk to staff, too, and then maybe we'll have some other questions for you. Is there anything else from staff? That we have a memo from Mr. Daley. I noticed that our zoning administrators, building inspectors here, if we have questions. Is there anything else you want to highlight for us?
I think, you know, there's just one point I think is important for the council to know, is Mr. Doyle approached the city with this proposition, so we haven't, we didn't go through an advertisement process or anything like that. So it was an idea he came up with that we wanted to bring before you. The second piece of it is the condition of the building, which I asked our building inspector to be here so that he could provide you his kind of report on what kind of state it's in, and some things that he would hope to see, that he would require to see to really be comfortable having vending out of that building. And then if you have general questions about Sandy Beach or anything like that, Director Schreiner is also available online. So it had originally started to see if it was possible to bring utilities to that building, to make it a little bit more robust, to be able to prepare food in it. But the utility cost at minimum would be $40,000, and it's just not a, not an economical project to undertake, as well as the disruption to the beach during the course of the project, which is why Mr. Doyle shifted to the request for the prepackaged materials. So if you do have questions on the building, I'd encourage you to ask Mr. Evanson to state a comment on it.
Troy, could we have Troy Evanson come up and tell, I'll wait till you come up. Thanks for being here. Yeah, can you just talk to us a little bit about the current condition of the building?
Sure. Director Schreiner had asked me to go down there a few weeks ago, once this proposal had been brought up to him, and asked to get my feel for if this building was suitable to do what Mr. Doyle wanted to do down there. And I'll be honest with you, it's definitely in disrepair. You know, it's been neglected. I think as long as I've been with the city, that building has always kind of been on the verge of getting removed. So it just hasn't had the attention that most of our buildings do in the city here. But, you know, it doesn't have any plumbing, doesn't have any heating or HVAC, so that's kind of nice. None of that's been ruined. It's basically just a shelter right now with some electricity. But the, for me to be comfortable with it, and I talked with Pat today about it, getting the exterior brought up to standards, getting it watertight, varmint tight, so that moisture can't continue to do dry rot and damage on the building, and probably have an electrician go through and make sure nothing, the wires have been chewed up, or nothing's been damaged in the years that it's been sitting idle. But he's right, as far as prepackaged, as far as I'm concerned, what I look for, the big-picture stuff, we've got bathrooms close by, we've got parking close by. There's really not a whole lot that he needs, other than a shelter to do what he's doing. And I think if he's willing to listen to you guys as far as how far you want the structural integrity brought back, that's kind of, I guess, up to you guys to see what you want.
Miss President?
Oh, yes. Ms. Quednow?
Yes. Thank you for letting us know about the condition. I just want to clarify, the cost of repairs for this building, is the city's responsibility, or is it going to be Mr. Doyle's responsibility?
I believe the resolution stipulates that it would be Mr. Doyle's responsibility to bring it up to the standards that Troy deems necessary.
So in doing that, would that mean that, is he paying a rental fee? I'm sorry, I...
Our current contract, which is consistent. Our current contract, which is consistent across the, the contracts there, is 5% of gross sales, Dan, gross sales, and so that could, that's, that's the negotiation that was agreed to previously between Mr., the Doyle's Dogs and the city council. That would carry forward. It, it's currently contemplated to carry forward at that rate for both of the, the gross sales of the vending machine, as well as anything at the concession stand.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Fields, any questions? Mr. Waters, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Curler. So, in regards to the facility itself, we're not concerned about the, the food, I guess, being up to food standards because it's prepackaged. Is, is that what I'm hearing here?
As far as I'm concerned, yeah. I mean, we don't do any health checks, obviously. You know, the health department would do something in a, in a normal restaurant-type environment, but with prepackaged, you know, that's kind of why my, my opinion was getting the building tightened up so that mice, rodents, whatnot couldn't get in this building and cause any sort of problems for, for them down the road. But, yeah, that's kind of the luxury of the prepackaged, is there's no environmental issues that should, should destroy those, in, in theory.
Okay. And then, and then I guess to point out the obvious that Ms. Quinnow just touched on, is that the 5% gross sales was a contract that we had prior that, that dealt with the, the cart, and now this is a situation where we have a building that's city-owned, and we're allowing use of that, and it seems like there should be a fee associated to that. So, that's not currently in this contract.
Did you want to make a comment about that, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I guess if we're the ones that are improving your building, I don't see it quite fair to say, "I have to foot that bill, and then I have to turn around and pay rent to use that space."
So, I think that's a, that's a, that's a reasonable comment. One of my concerns about this proposal is I think if improvements are going to be made to the city's building, I think the city should be doing that and taking that responsibility, since we're the owners of the structure. And I'm not sure that, well, I'm, I'm sure that this council has not evaluated or had, has, has not developed a plan to continue to use that building. So, we're, you know, responding to your proposal, but I, I personally don't feel that it's a good policy for us to allow a private individual to be modifying a city-owned structure. So, I have kind of just a general policy concern about that. Ms. Bishop?
I have a couple of comments about those statements. First off, it's a building that's not really being used except for storage. Mr. Doyle is willing to come in with his own funds and make it a usable space to add value to our parks that people, I think, will get used out of, whether it's the vending machine putting in a dollar for a water, that he's gonna give us a percentage of the revenue, if he's gonna sell also things that haven't been previously available, such as, you know, I'm imagining in the prepared, prepackaged goods, some ice cream and stuff like that, also beach goods. The fact that he's not paying a lease on an unused building that he's gonna fix up isn't really an issue to me, because he's providing a, a different type of value, as well as if he can be there more frequently, because it's a covered shelter, if he can sell more goods because of, again, the frequency of being there, the now diversified options available for people to purchase. I think we have a likelihood of seeing increased revenue, even if it's at the 5%, because he's selling more things. He has more opportunity to make those sales. So, on that basis, I'm not really concerned about letting Mr. Doyle use this space, because I think it's a net benefit to the city and to our citizens using the park. I also, you know, think if he's gonna work with Mr. Avinson to get it up to a safe standard, what I see is the state has come in and said, you know, "We're changing the standards for refrigeration." Mr. Doyle really just needs a place where he can put in the right refrigeration to sell the goods that he wants to. And if, if it's safe for a person to physically stand in the building, the building's not gonna collapse. I don't see any issues with him going in and improving it visually and making sure it's safe for somebody to be there and sell the goods that he wants to sell.
Ms. Quinnow?
Mr. Shiner, can you tell me what the square footage of that building is?
No, I can't off the top of my head.
Mr. Doyle, do you have an idea, a rough estimate? Do you want to step up?
I'd say about 14 by 20. We would be using half of it. Your other vendor uses half of it to store their materials currently.
So, a building that's 14 feet by 20 feet currently?
Correct.
I'm, I'm just reiterating, because it, I didn't know if the microphone picked it up. It's okay. It's a weird thing, I get it.
It's very similar to the hot dog stand when we bought it. So, that's where the 14 by 20 is coming from. We would be using half of that space. Your other vendor at the beach uses the other space there to store materials. So, we would not be the only one using it.
Yeah, I see that in the resolution, and I appreciate that, that you're willing to share that space with the other vendor. I think that's very considerate.
Well, and we took that very seriously. We're gonna have a, a service, or service window that currently is there. We're just gonna make it more secure. We also will be running a divider, a curtain divider, down the center, because if there are materials that they are storing in there that customers would show attention to, I want to make sure that they don't see anything. So, we, we are running a curtain divider down the middle of that to separate it into two spaces, to make sure that there is privacy on that other side.
Sure. Is there any conversation with the other vendor about the possibility of sharing that cost?
I've mentioned it, I've mentioned it to him, and that there, there wasn't a concern.
No, no, sharing the cost of the repair.
Oh, no, no. We're not, we're not looking for that.
Okay.
And, and we will clean up the outside. If you see what we do, we have a certain look to what we do, and it, it, it would, in my opinion, it would greatly improve what is currently there for the community.
So, you can buy the pictures. I agree with you.
Yeah, you know, and there, there are ways to do that, and, you know, and Troy and I talked today, and we would talk more with this. To be frank with you, I think we're gonna show you the value of that building, and that the community really does like that, and maybe something like that might belong there in the long term.
Mr. Doyle, just one more question, and then I'll let you go.
Sure.
Sorry. The, the building that you started your business in, that, that used to be a gas station.
Correct.
Was that owned by the city before you purchased it?
No, that was Klink Oil in Watertown.
Okay, I just didn't know if that was, like, you know, if we were in the same situation.
Yeah, no, no.
That's all, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Waters?
I'd like to have a follow-up question for Mr. Doyle real quick here. Based on what Mrs. Bishop said on the refrigeration, how's that refrigeration gonna occur when there's no electricity to the building?
That's not, that's not, there will be a freezer in there, there'll be frozen things. We're not looking at prepackaged sandwiches or things of that nature, that, that would require refrigeration. There will be a freezer in there. There would be a cooler in there to keep soda and drinks cold. We are not looking to do sandwiches that are prepackaged. We're going more down the line of candy treats, ice cream, things that would apply to the beach down there. We would refer to it as a snack shack.
So, these are devices that will, will keep things cool but are not electrified?
No, no. There, there would be a freezer plugged in, just like on the other side, there is a freezer that they are using that is plugged in.
So, there is electricity to the building?
Yes. Yes, there is electricity in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Daley, do you know how old this building is and how long it's been since it's been in use?
We don't know since it's been in use. I don't know when the building was constructed. I asked staff, and consensus is that it, at minimum, is over 40 years old. Last time it was in use...
More than that.
Before the fi-
Well, more than that.
We're asking staff right now, Mr. Doyle?
I, we don't know. I, I mean...
Because that would have been Mr. Herring.
It would have been Herring, and he was under lease for the sandbar and had, under that lease, he had the ability to use that bait shack. I'm guessing it's closer to 10 years at least. It's been a while. There were soda machines there as well. Herring ran snacks and such, and then he also sold bait and some beach goods. It's, it's, it definitely has been a while.
Because he used it for the rentals, too. They would rent the canoes and stuff, so...
Pontoons, yeah.
Yeah, probably eight years ago, for sure.
At a minimum, I, yeah.
Yeah, because we, me, Julie and I walked down there when he did rentals and stuff.
Mr. Shiner?
Yep, this is Director Shiner here. I can verify that at least in 2013, that that building was in operation for vending and retail.
It was, in 2013, okay.
Now, beyond 2013, I would not be able to verify, but for sure in 2013, they were selling bait, same thing. It was sunscreen, general goods for the beach, but that would be the last date that I'd be able to verify personally.
To, to my knowledge, John ran that as long as he ran the restaurant. As we both got Cedar Crest ice cream, and they told me that they were delivering to the beach as well.
Yeah, I think he actually discontinued use there prior to him terminating the lease with the sandbar. I'm, I'm pretty positive.
Yeah.
And 2013 sounds, that sounds about right. He was under lease at the sandbar until 2019. And I'm, I'm certain that it wasn't used within the last five years, and I, I'd leaned more towards that 10-year mark.
So, Mr. Fields, I'm wondering if I can put you on the spot. You and I were talking before the meeting about, you were on a council when the council gave the go-ahead to demolish the restaurant, and I'd asked you if they talked about this building at that time. So, what, what's your recollection about the past council action?
At that time, the council was looking at keeping it. It was used for, it could be used for storage for the parks down there, or we talked about even the food trucks, or possibly some food, short-term out of there, just because there was electricity there. I think it was, I think we were looking at in, in the design that in like the third phase, when the boat landing came out, that building was gonna come out. So, it was kind of just left behind as a storage building, more than anything, because it did have electricity there. So, it did give us a few options, but it was slated to come out in the, in the big picture.
Ms. Curler, may I offer a few comments?
Sure.
I was, I was involved in that process. Under the lease with Crawfish Junction, which still operates a food truck out there seasonally, they did, they did ask specifically to store goods in the, the shack. I believe Mr. Doyle did as well at the onset of that lease. There was an RFP process for lessies at the beach, for conveyance of food and wares and such. The bait shack was specifically not included in that RFP, and I think that the council and staff at that point had concerns about suitability for that use, structural integrity, et cetera. And I think a big portion of that, the thought process at that point, was that, like Mr. Fields just said, the redevelopment of the beach itself was expected to occur in a more rapid pace than it has at this point. And in, in a phase of this, they were going to take out the entire launch, potentially leaving the actual launch for small craft, et cetera, to access the lake. But that building was going to be removed, and the entire area was going to become Sandy Beach. At the same time, as they took out the sandbar, raised that building, they did remove the gas tank that was adjacent to the, the shack, as well as the pump that was there that was inoperable. So, those are the steps that were taken and the considerations that were applied to this specific structure at that time.
Dan, if I may add as well, Clean Boats, Clean Waters program facilitated by Jefferson County does also store a couple materials. It's a couple bins for their pamphlets, materials, and flyers that they hand out to boaters. I have offered additional storage separate from this building for Clean Boats, Clean Waters, whether it be in our shop or in the Sandy Beach garage for them to store their materials at. But they, that is another entity that uses that building, of which I provided a different storage opportunity for them.
Ms. Quinnow? Dan, this is actually a follow-up question for you. Let's just say that we go through the phases as planned, and this building that, that Mr. Doyle has put money into repairing, we decide as, as a city council or city that we, we no longer need that building. Are we in any way financially responsible to Mr. Doyle because of his contribution to that building?
I think based on the intent that I've heard, the answer would be no, but that definitely needs to be formalized in, in the agreement, and that is absolutely an issue that should be addressed in the event that this does go forward.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Quinnow. That relates to one of my concerns about this proposal. I feel like the, you know, allowing a private individual to make improvements to a city-owned building is gonna create an expectation to be able to continue to use that building. And actually, Mr. Doyle said it himself, that he feels that he can make it look really nice and, and meet beachgoers' needs, and that we'll want to keep it. And I want to make sure that we're not giving any false hopes in whether this building is going to remain or not as, as a long-term structure at Sandy Beach. You know, we may revisit some of those plans, but currently Phase Three would call for that building to be removed, and so I don't want to set up a situation where there's any kind of expectation of continuing to be able to use that building, or that the city would keep that building, because we would approve this now. Another thought that I have, or concern that I have that's mentioned in the city's memo, and Mr. Daley brought it up briefly, is that we haven't put out an RFP for this. So, this council didn't really contemplate the idea of renting out this building, and so we haven't offered it to anyone else. And I feel like there is a little bit of a fairness issue here, that maybe we would have other vendors that might also be interested in this, and we're not really giving them that opportunity. So, those are a number of the concerns that I have about this proposal.
With regard to your last comment and offering, I mean, I agree with where you're going with this, and, and to follow up what I was saying before, but as far as the other vendors go, the two main vendors who are there are sharing the space. So, that part I'm not gonna have too much hesitancy about. I'm not sure if an RFP is going to be necessary. I think it's gonna slow us down, and I think that Mr. Doyle is looking to probably get this done quickly, so that he can get it started before, before we have Sandy Beach weather. But, what my main concern is, is what I brought up to Mr., to, to Dan, is just how is this going to play out in the long run, right? So...
I think in that statement, you need to distinguish that the, the other party that would be involved here, Crawfish Junction, does have a clause in their lease that allows specifically storage. This is a completely different use than merely storage. We don't know if that vendor would have liked to have been able to use the space to vend out of. We have, that's, that's the point that Ms. Curler is making. We have not done an RFP there. There could be an argument that an RFP is required in this circumstance, just because we don't know what the market would allow for use there. Maybe we're drastically undercharging for the proposed use. Do we have an obligation to explore that? And I'm not prepared to necessarily answer that question, but I think it's a valid consideration.
Mr. Fields?
Mr. Dresser, when we did the first request for proposals for down at Sandy Beach, I did, I thought we did have some people, or we offered that they could use that building for certain things. So, I don't know if, because we've kind of continued off that first one, that we've actually just kind of renewed contracts each year.
And we've had a couple of different vendors that have kind of come and gone. We have another party that's interested this year in, in a food truck service specifically. My recollection with regard to that RFP, and we can go through it, it's still online, was that storage was contemplated, and that was actually requested after the fact. There was never contemplation of actually using that building, and none of the proposals that we specifically received kind of contemplated that, the use of the building.
I know none of them contemplated that, but I didn't know if we had an option in it or not in that original proposal.
I think the main concern there is no water, no plumbing, you know, electricity that hadn't been operated for a while, the, the general status of the building, the, the structural integrity, et cetera. So, I, I don't believe in that RFP, that that option was presented. Um, so I, I don't believe in that RFP, that that option was presented.
This is Bishop. I honestly can't even believe that this proposal is questionable in terms of the city's perspective, that we wouldn't want to do this. This is a net benefit to the city in providing a usable space, providing revenue for the city at really no cost to us, no downside to us, no liability to us. This isn't even a lease, actually it's a license, and that grants even less rights to the use of the property, the city's property, than a lease would. It's a non-exclusive license of that, which allows other people to come in and provide the same or similar services as Crawfish is doing. Crawfish, if they wanted to, they could have the right idea to use the building. Frankly, they don't need it. Crawfish has a food truck, which has all of the amenities that Mr. Doyle's food cart doesn't have. Mr. Doyle is working to provide something that, like I said, is a benefit to the city at his own expense. And when we don't want it anymore, if we go that route, well, the license that we're renewing, that we're authorizing the city to continue to enter into, says specifically that the renewal is contingent upon availability due to any redevelopment or construction activity on the premises. Mr. Doyle knows and has known by the language of the license that he doesn't have any exclusive rights to this facility, that his adding to this building, which, what's it gonna be, some paint, maybe framing up the window to make sure that it works or doesn't get stuck? We're not building a Taj Mahal here, okay? You know, to be a little bit tongue-in-cheek. And so why don't we just let him come in and do it for three or four months? I don't really see what the issue is here, why somebody would be so opposed to a creative citizen who wants to take some responsibility, who wants to add value to our city.
Ms. Quin.
I don't think any of us really disagree with you, Ms. Bishop. I agree with you in every way that you said. I just wanna make sure that the city's situation is covered. And, and that's where I think Dan was saying, that we need to make sure that there's something very specific. But your license, um, language is interesting, 'cause I did not know that, and it's good to know that it's in there specifically, and that Mr. Doyle knows about this going into it. I, again, it's not, I would never stifle any kind of creativity in this area. I think it's just a matter of making sure we have our, uh, our i's dotted and our t's crossed.
Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Waters.
Um, if we move forward with this proposal, who would be responsible for the utilities?
Right now, electricity is billed to the city.
Correct.
So it's a city's cost?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I guess, as I look at this, there's a value to the building. Uh, of course, Mr. Doyle's talking about providing a value of, of rehabbing the building to a certain level. I guess going into this, I'd like to understand what the costs are to bring this building up to a certain standard that's acceptable. Because there's definitely a value in the building, and is that an acceptable amount for the, the three months that we're talking about? Or should there be an additional fee for those three months? Because there is a value to the building, and we're paying for the electricity.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Um, and I guess I, with all due respect, I do disagree with some of the statements that Mrs. Bishop has made. In particular, I took a look at the building today, um, and it's in significant disrepair. There's a lot of holes in the walls of that building, so it's not simply a matter of putting on a coat of paint and maybe repairing one window and putting up a, an attractive sign. There's significant work that needs to be done. I, I have no expertise to estimate the amount. Um, I have no fault with Mr. Doyle wanting to provide, um, a valuable service to our community at that beach, and I have no question of his ability to do so. What I question is whether it's a good city policy to let someone else, um, pay for repairs to a city-owned building, and the kind of expectations that that will create for continued long-term use. I, I think that puts us in a difficult position. And I also agree with Mr. Waters that I'm not sure that 5% of sales is appropriate, um, given the difference between what we're providing here versus what we are providing to a food truck.
Um, Ms. Curler?
Miss Bishop.
We're talking about 5% of sales. I mean, when we last accepted the revenue from these two food trucks last summer, it was like shockingly low. It was like, I wanna say less than $200. So we're talking about raising a fee on somebody who maybe only made $500 the whole summer, yet they provided food and at least a service out there? I say, let it go this year, let him try it. If it's like a booming business and we get 5% of sales and we're like, oh, wow, you did really well, like, okay, we'll tax you some more, fine. But I mean, like, let's just let the guy put it into service and see if it even works before we start talking about taking more than a portion of a, a very small, small revenue for what he's doing.
Is there any further comments or discussion? Ms. Quin.
Would it be feasible to table this just so that we can get the repair costs and identify what those could possibly be? Or do you already know what those are, Mr. Doyle?
I wouldn't know that till I sit down with, with Troy and go over the building. The problem with putting things off is that it isn't a large-dollar business down there.
Right.
And it would require using all of the available time, Memorial Day through Labor Day, to generate whatever revenue you could. If you push that back a month, you've now cut the potential for, for revenue by a third.
No, I completely understand. I just wanna make sure that when you go into that building, it's gonna be in a place where you can operate and not.
And I've been in it, and I, it would, and that's why I talked with Troy today, and it would require, whether you say, yes, go ahead, it's wonderful, and then he and I go down there and realize it's bigger than either of us really, really thought. That's possible.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just because you, if you were to approve it tonight, that doesn't mean everything's done. But it means we can actually start.
I see this proposal.
Mrs. Bishop.
Yes, I'm sorry. I realized I wasn't called on either. So, Madam President, okay. I see this proposal really as allowing Mr. Doyle and the city to see if this is even feasible. If it's not, if he can't get the building in repair, if he can't use it, he won't operate the building, but nor can he operate the food cart with current regulations. So if we don't approve this resolution at all, he, we're not gonna see any revenue from our second vendor there at all. So as long as we realize that, um, you know, I, again, I just don't see the issue with letting him try.
So because of all the unknowns, um, that we've been identifying and talking about tonight, and there does seem to be an interest on Mr. Doyle's part to, to get an answer tonight, um, I, I am not in favor of this resolution, but I will make a motion to amend this resolution um, to, and I'm not sure how to word this, but where, um, in authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement, we would modify the agreement so that it's not automatically renewed. I think the current agreement is automatically renewed, so we would wanna see how. My, my proposal, in other words, is that we would amend it for one year so that there would be an opportunity for, uh, to see how it goes for all parties for one season.
That seems punitive unless we do it for the other food vendor as well.
Oh, I wanna be distinct here. My recollection with regard to the actual agreements is that, um, the vendor has to provide us notice of their intent to renew, uh, prior to the new year. So I, I think that it, it doesn't necessarily automatically renew. There is an opportunity for automatically renew, um, but there is a, an intent element. The, uh, um, the vendor has to provide notice of their intent to renew, and then the city has to basically acquiesce to that.
With all due respect, it's not punitive because this is a different agreement allowing use of a building, whereas the other agreement is allowing use of a food, a license for operating a food cart. So it's a little bit apples and oranges in that respect, and I think because, again, we have a lot of unknowns, how much it's gonna cost for repairs, how much revenue we're gonna get, how much electricity is gonna be cost to the city, that I think it's reasonable to see how it goes for one year and make sure that it gets revisited before we would do it for another year. So that, I have made an amendment, and I don't know how, how the wording, um, should work, but is the, do we need to come up with language to amend the resolution?
Uh, yeah, I need clarification on what your, your amendment is.
Well, I guess there's a now, therefore be it resolved at the City Council, City of Lake Mills, that the city manager is authorized to amend the agreement.
Right.
Um, so it's redefine the premises, allow them to operate out of the concession stands, place a soda machine, soda vending machine outside of said building, and that the agreement will not automatically renew.
So maybe what you're looking for is just one-season term right now.
So that would be another way of putting it, for, for 2023.
Is that in the first paragraph of the resolution, then, that it should be changed? Because it does say automatically renewing in the first whereas.
Uh, that is contrary to the, uh, the actual terms of the, uh, the lease agreements, the license agreements. Um, like I, like I explained before, there has to be an overt action by the tenant to, um, place their intent to renew. So I think that may just be, um, kind of word soup right there. If someone wants the right to renew, they generally have the right to renew in accordance with the leases that are currently drafted. But we are looking at, uh, a drastic amendment to the current lease.
So could it be simply, um, authorizing to amend the agreement for 2023? Just inserting that phrase in the paragraph that's now, therefore be it resolved?
Um, I think that would suffice. I think that what that would do is if, if, is that it would, this resolution would only be in effect, in effect for the 2023 season, season, and then it would revert back to the previously approved, um, license agreement. Does that make sense, Dan, that it would, that this change would be in effect for the 2023 season? And then barring action to continue that arrangement, it would, it would revert back to the previous license.
Yeah, unless we state otherwise, yeah. I think you're right.
Okay, so that is my motion. Do people understand the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Waters? Any discussion? So I think the language we've.
Madam President, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Fields.
I guess I'm challenged with trying to put additional restrictions, especially if Mr. Doyle's willing to put some money into this. Um, he's putting some skin into it, and he knows that we get to make the call each year whether or not we're gonna renew if we're moving forward with the Sandy Beach phases, where this might go away. So I guess I'm challenged putting extra restrictions or potentials on him if he's willing to make this financial. And if we're talking, we're running two freezers, they're gonna be something similar to what you're running at home. If you're looking at $20 a month, if we can't afford $20 a month with getting revenue down there to do this for a year, uh, we got bigger problems.
I think I'm a little, Ms. Curler?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Waters.
I think I'm a little bit confused here. So if we would agree to this resolution, it would be a, in my hearing, it would be a long-term resolution based on the terms of this contract? So we would not be able to go back and, and modify the, the terms as in to charge for the building in the future?
No, you always have the ability to amend that agreement. Uh, what's before you right now, um, the, the contract itself needs to be amended for this use if it's going to go forward at this location. I guess when I'm looking at the resolution right now, perhaps everything that's, uh, you know, appropriate to be amended isn't necessarily considered in that agreement, and maybe we should add a clause that, um, there's, uh, you know, flexibility in negotiating kind of some of these lingering questions, um, between the city manager and Mr. Doyle if you wanna go forward with this. That would also give an opportunity to have an understanding on, you know, what a site plan looks like, what security of that potential, that, that building looks like, uh, what improvements are necessary, and maybe just a little bit more clarity on what the agreement is generally.
Yeah, 'cause I guess I'm leaning towards, maybe in the first year, the repairs of the facility might be appropriate, but in year two, um, there may not be a need for that, and there may be more of a, uh, a, a desire to, to put a, a rent fee or something to that, to that effect in the future.
So, Mr. Dresser, I'm unclear from what you just stated, whether, um, revising the resolution as I had proposed is sufficient. It sounds like you're saying perhaps we need some additional language to make clear the council's intentions?
The, well, I'm not clear in what the council's intention is. The, your statement specifically limits the term. You're, you're establishing, uh, potentially we'll try this for 2023. You have no ongoing rights with regard to that building, um, outside of the agreement that's amended to state just 2023. Um, if you're looking at, um, I think what we're lacking here is what the plan generally is. If we walked into the room tonight and we knew exactly what improvements were required by the building inspector, exactly at what cost, what the use looked like, what exclusivity of the use looked like, um, that would probably create a little bit more comfort in my mind with regard to the proposed amendments. I'm looking back at the RFP and comparing that right now, and comparing that to the actual lease agreement that Mr. Doyle has entered into. That is consistent with Crawfish Junction, that is consistent with Big Old Raps, that is consistent with the other purveyors of goods out there, uh, through time. That is the lease that I'd propose that we use for the next food truck that, um, is, is looking to utilize space out there. So this is a different use in my mind. It's, uh, an isolated space. The premises are defined differently. Um, and I think there are some questions here that you've brought up tonight that, that aren't known. So either we amend the resolution to attack exactly what you want this relationship and this agreement to look like now, or we take time and figure out what that looks like, and then bring it back with an appropriate, um, kind of more, um, comprehensive agreement.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Dresser, and it reminds me of, um, a few times in the last couple of years where this council has had permit applications come before us for conditional uses or other things where we didn't feel that the plans were sufficiently described, and it makes it difficult to act on them. And I think what you're saying is that maybe is the case here as well. We don't have maybe an exact understanding of exactly what the site plan is, what the operation plan is.
And frankly, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, um, my, what I've heard a number of times is concern about, um, the investment that Mr. Doyle is going to make into the building, and some expectation of a, a property right or something akin to a property right moving forward. Um, from your perspective, perhaps you wanna know exactly how much money is going to be invested into this, this structure um, prior to engaging in this use, what's necessary. Right now, we have some pictures that show the outside has, you know, um, some, some holes and, and maybe some accessibility for varmints. Um, but beyond that, we, we don't know. We know it has electricity, and that's about it.
So, Mr. Evensen, is that the kind of information that could be gathered within the next two weeks and brought back to the council, some, um, assessment of the condition of the building and the work that would need to be done to improve it on a, a tentative sense of cost?
Sure, sure. I, I had talked to Mr. Doyle earlier today and said that really getting a contractor down there or him getting information to a contractor to say, this, these are the items we need to address, and that getting some sort of ballpark number. And what I had mentioned is, I, I spent about five minutes in there. I didn't, you know, open up walls, I didn't go in any attic. I don't know the extent of the repairs, and I think that's what he was getting at is, um, himself included. We haven't really spent enough time down there to see exactly, is this gonna be $1,000 or $5,000? Probably don't know that until, you know, I don't think either one of us were gonna invest a bunch of time until this was gonna be approved. I, I didn't see it going this way today, that we were gonna be looking for a exact dollar amount. I'm not a contractor, I, I, but if I had to shoot from the hip, we're $2,500 away from making this a usable building would be an accurate-ish number, I'm guessing.
Okay, so the amendment on the floor is, um, to revise Resolution 23-32 for only the year 2023. I made that motion, um, to amend, and, um, in light of the discussion, I'm gonna withdraw that motion and instead make a motion to table Resolution 23-32 to the next meeting so that we. so that we can get a more detailed site plan and information about the needed repairs to the building.
Ms. Curler, what is the next meeting?
Next council meeting?
June 6th.
So.
June 6th is the next.
Yeah. Even if we were able to get those things in the next two weeks, we wouldn't be able to discuss it until June 6th, is my understanding?
And sorry, that's the reason I said two weeks, is I was thinking the next meeting is probably, it may not be precisely two weeks.
Correct. There's a fifth week, there's a fifth Tuesday in May, which would be on the 30th. The next council meeting is three weeks from today. You, that's your regular, that's your regular meeting time. You would have to, if you wanted to discuss it earlier, you'd have to have a special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Daly, for clarifying that, and I think I heard Mr. Waters second the motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on the motion to table to the next council meeting? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on the motion to table Resolution 23-32 to the next council meeting?
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quinnow? Motion fails.
Okay, so we're back to the original Resolution 23-32. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't think we have enough information in this resolution as far as the, knowing the cost and the cost to the city to bring this up, the cost to the, to the user to bring this up to speed. There's just a lot of unknowns. I think we need to clarify those things.
Yes, Mrs. Bishop. I had a comment in response to Mr. Waters. I agree with you in the sense that I am very sensitive to costs to the city for any project. I completely get it. Mr. Doyle, from his discussion of this, what I get is like, I don't even know that there's going to be a freezer there running, but if it's one freezer, I mean, really, what is the cost of electricity? I think we cover the cost of electricity anyway under both of these licenses that have previously been granted. So that's a cost the city has already absorbed. To run a couple of light bulbs up there while he's in business, a few dollars a month, we'll make that back in a percentage of the money that we're getting. I mean, I just see the cost here as being so negligible compared to everything else the city spends money on when we're going to make money back on the back of Mr. Doyle. So for me, that's not a concern in this instance, even though I do hear what you're saying, and I am typically very sensitive to that.
Mr. Drescher, you had mentioned that an amendment needed to take place in order to make sure that the questions that we have, that we've discussed in this evening, would be addressed in the resolution. Is that correct?
I didn't say anything was compulsory. I'm asking, I'm asking for direction from the council as well. What is your intent? What information would you like to know? You can freely amend this. I'm not directing you.
No, no, no. I wanted to make sure that if I gave an amendment, it would make sense. Because I agree that the information needs to be had, but I also don't want to suspend the act of making this decision because the type of information that we will be able to get and Mr. Doyle will be able to process with is, that's on him in terms of the costs. And so I want to lay it out very, very clearly in the amendment that all costs for repair, and yes, it's in there, but that, let me just make sure I'm saying this right, because I don't want to say something that doesn't sound right.
Ms. Quinnow?
Yes, sir.
Are you perhaps seeking to clarify that if the city were to not renew this license for any reason, that those costs invested in that, he would not have a right for those to be recouped?
That sounds perfect.
I would second that amendment, Ms. Quinnow.
Okay. Then perhaps, would that be another whereas?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. Probably, I'm focusing on the whereas stating that prior to commencing operations over the Sandy Beach Concession Stand and Bait Shop Building, Doyle's Dogs will be required to abide by any orders of the City of Lake Mills Building Inspector. And then I'd add a whereas that states, whereas any improvements or maintenance work that is done to the building by Doyle's Dogs and any expenses incurred thereof would not be, there would be no ability to recoup those costs, and Doyle's Dogs would have no property right with regard to the shack, what's being used.
I think that that makes a lot of sense, and I support the language that you.
Generally, I'm not going verbatim there, I'm gonna.
I appreciate the language that you've used, because it's certainly not something that was coming freely to me. So with that said, I am moving to amend the resolution of 22, or 23-32 to include the verbiage of Mr. Drescher's comment.
And generally, what I stated is that there would be no property rights established based on his use or any improvements or maintenance done, and there would be no recouping of costs that Mr. Doyle expends in improving or maintaining the property.
Thank you.
Second?
Just for the record, that was the understanding I had with Drake when we talked.
Sure, and I understand that, Mr. Doyle, but, you know, we have to have things in writing to cover a basis.
So we have a motion to amend Resolution 23-23 by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Ms. Bishop, adding an additional whereas paragraph. Does everybody understand what's in the, generally what the text will be?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, can we have a roll call on the amendment, please?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions or comments on Resolution 23-32 as amended?
Um.
Mr. Waters?
Yeah, I'd like to get some clarity on, as far as the terms of the contract, that's something that, that we can renegotiate on an annual basis then?
My contention would be that we have to terminate the lease and then enter into a new one. We can cause termination at the end of any season.
And then a second question, as far as a food inspector, if they came down and deemed that this was an inappropriate facility, what would happen in that situation? Would the city have any, any responsibilities?
One more time on that one?
If there was a food inspector that came down and said that that building was not proper for food, for whatever reason, would the city have any responsibility?
No, I don't believe so. Under, and this does add a little bit of a difference compared to the lease agreement that the current lessees are under, in that it is our structure. But it is our property already, and the current lease does require compliance with all state, county, local health ordinances and codes. It does require appropriate permits and licenses for the vendors to act. From what Mr. Doyle has explained, I don't think that this would fall into that area where he would be subject to food inspection, but I'm really not sure. I'm not a health professional in that regard. I do see what the agreement that Mr. Doyle is currently under and has agreed to states. And that says, vendor agrees at his own expense to obtain and keep current all licenses and permits necessary for the operation of vendor's business and to comply with all federal, state statutes, local ordinances, rules and regulations applicable to vendor's business. Vendor agrees to obtain all necessary inspections by county health department, fire department, and any other governmental agency that are required to operate the service authorized under this agreement. So once again, we're amending that service. Vendor shall provide to city such proof of compliance upon request. Failure to comply with this provision is a default under the agreement. And then beyond that, within the same agreement, we do, the city does enjoy certain indemnification that is provided from the lessees regarding his activities there. He holds the city harmless for his activities. So I'm not concerned about liability from the vendor's standpoint. I absolutely, with regard to his operations, in good conscience, would look into that and make sure that he's compliant, compliant in accordance with the lease, but I don't see a potential for City of Lake Mills liability there.
Thank you, Mr. Drescher.
You're very welcome.
No further questions for me.
I just have a follow-up on Mr. Waters' first question. I'm looking at the agreement that we approved in 2022 on renewal. And as you said, Mr. Drescher, the vendor may renew this agreement subject to city approval and some other things. So does that city approval come in the form of a staff approval, or does that mean it comes back to the council?
We have not been bringing the renewals back to council so long, so staff approval, so long as, you know, there's no issues, we're operating in good faith and appropriate payment is made, there's not other violations or defaults within the lease, we've invited vendors back. The initiation of new leases, I've always brought in front of the council for approval. With regard to, if you continue on in that term, number three, renewal, it does state that the city's decision to renew or not renew the agreement will be based upon mutual agreement, including the vendor's performance under the agreement during and through the renewal request. The city will notify the vendor in writing of its decision to renew or not renew this agreement no later than December 31st of the year prior, essentially. So just to kind of fill out that statement.
So if, as what you've just read, so if the council had any concerns that we wanted to revisit the agreement, December would be the time period that we would need to discuss that or bring that issue up?
Yes, no certainty. By that point, I mean, we end in, like, the end of the season, September, maybe as late as we go, and then you have some time to kind of look at the situation and take stock and renegotiate or do what you think is appropriate at that point. What I'd need from you is direction to do so.
Okay, so we have Resolution 23-32, which was amended to add a whereas regarding no property rights and no recouping of costs. Is there any further discussion or comments on Resolution 23-32 as amended?
Quick question.
Ms. Quinnow?
What I'm hearing Mr. Drescher say is that the direction that you need from us is that we need to put some verbiage in there with regard to the December date, or do we not need the December date? We do not need that in there?
If I may, I think what it is, is that if you want, since past practice has not been to bring these renewals back to the city council.
Correct.
If you want specifically this renewal to come back to you after the end of the season, you should stipulate that in the resolution.
So am I able to amend my amendment?
You can make another amendment. The previous amendment's incorporated, it's just another amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Quinnow, did you want to make a motion? I think we have to vote on our, the amended.
No, we voted on the previous one, so that's why he's saying you'd need to make a new.
So many amendments.
Did I understand that correctly? Okay.
Okay, so then I would like to amend the amended resolution to include a timeline of that, upon, upon the end of the allowable season or the allowable amount of time that Doyle's Dogs is able to be in service, after which we will be able to review and approve a further lease agreement after one year. Does that make sense?
I would simplify it and say that no later than December 5th, 2023, the license will come back before the city council for consideration of renewal for the following season.
Okay, I like yours.
That's the first Tuesday in December, just for reference.
So that would be a whereas then? Or be a, under one of the, be it resolved?
Um.
Or be it maybe another new?
I think either one would accomplish your goal. I would.
Could be another.
User's choice, really, on that one. If it's an a whereas or in the be it resolved section, I think it carries the same authority.
It's really just providing direction to staff on what to do with the, with the agreement in the future.
So it would be bringing the, if I understand her motion correctly, it would be bringing the agreement back to the council rather than just having staff reviewing it for renewal for next year?
That's correct.
So let's make that another whereas, please.
Okay. We'll just put it as the final whereas.
That's perfect.
So can you summarize it again or roughly what it might say?
Whereas, this, the, a review of this license for the 2024 season will be completed, or will be conducted by the city council no later than, did I say December 5th?
Yeah.
December 5th, 2023.
Okay. Okay, motion by Ms. Quinnow? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, can we have a roll, we have an amendment to the amended Resolution 23-32, adding an additional whereas provision, bringing the, this agreement back to the city council for review for the 2024 season in December of 2023. So Madison, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0, 3-2.
Okay, so we have Resolution 23-32 that has been amended twice. Is there any further discussion or questions or comments or amendments?
No, I move the previous question.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 23-32.
If I may clarify.
A second.
Thank you. A motion to, Mrs. Bishop's motion requires a, requires a second.
Thank you.
A call to question is a motion which requires a second.
And then it's a super majority? And a super majority vote, right?
To end debate, that's correct, I believe.
Okay, so Mrs. Bishop has made a motion to call the question, meaning that debate would end. Is there a second? Okay, there's no second?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Fields has seconded. So do we need to vote on that motion, or do we just proceed to vote on the resolution?
Nope, you need to vote on the motion to call the question.
Okay, so we need a roll call on the vote to call the question.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, let's have a roll call on Resolution 23-32 authorizing the city manager to amend Doyle's. Doyle's Dogs food cart contract for Sandy Beach Park with the two amendments that were approved.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-2.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for working through that. We are on to agenda item number 10, which is recommendations for future agendas. Mr. Daly, what have you got for us?
I have nothing to comment on at this moment in time.
Okay, the one thing I know, we're still wanting to try to get scheduled is a Sandy Beach work session, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's looking like...
June.
Early June, okay. Council members, any other? Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, an update from city staff on how we're going to create the debt service fund or not, and if not, why not?
Mrs. Bishop, did you have any, I know you've been working for a while on a couple items, any updates on timeline for those?
I spoke to Mr. Daly right before this meeting. I think the Mill Pond Committee Resolution would be coming in June. They were looking for something from the DNR, and I, my recommendation to him was we can move forward on forming the committee without that. And then the community center policy is still on me, I have a final draft that I'll get back to city staff.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, fellow council members? Okay, the next agenda item, number 11, is to convene into closed session to discuss yard waste center sites and EMS intergovernmental agreements pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And to continue discussions on regular city manager performance review pursuant to Section 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Can I get a motion to convene into closed session?
I move to convene and close session.
Second. Motion by Ms. Quednow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Can we get a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. The council will now be moving into closed session. That will end the video for this evening. We will reconvene off video, and so that is the end of the open meeting for this evening. Thank you.